Wednesday, May 9th. We are located at 114 West Buckington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. At this time, I'm gonna call to order the judge is out at a conference. So I will be leading the charge today. So at this time, I'm gonna ask if Ms. Pastor Yvonne isn't here. Mr. Williamson, would you lead us in prayer? Let us all stand.
Let's pray.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity together today and this great day that you have provided for us. Look after our commissioners today as they make decisions that may affect the whole county. And Lord, please look after our first responders whenever they are out on a call. And also, Lord, look after our armed forces personnel, that if it were not for them, we would not even be able to meet today. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of your names, thanks to America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I'd also like to say Commissioner Dobianski is also at a leadership conference in Washington, DC. And we appreciate his service to our county, representing us. At this time, we're up to public comments. We look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County. We do ask that each person limit their comments to two minutes. And we'll begin by opening the floor up. We are not able to respond to you, but we do take public comments.
None of you know me. I'm not from your county. I am from Brazos County. I live in a little community called Edge. It is absolutely the edge of nowhere. Our sheriff here seems to-
Maybe have your name, please.
No, I'm sorry, K-PAC, K-A-Y, P-A-C-K. The sheriff here seems to think that as a rescuer, that I have no knowledge of horses. He quoted it. That's his quote. He said, "As a rescuer, I have no knowledge of how to rescue a horse." I'd like to tell you that I've rescued four. I've been to Killpin in Oklahoma, and I have been to a place in Missouri. I also recently had to rescue my own two horses that were with a trainer. Y'all don't know Sheriff Cornell. He is with McLinnan County. He was very proactive in the fact that he got all 28 horses seized and taken to a recovery area where they received vet care for Texas A&amp;M, and they received medical care and food while they were being taken care of. So I'd like to thank him for being proactive. Sheriff Saul, I can't say that you're proactive. This has been three years that you've been told, three years that you've been told that these horses were starving to death. The citizens of this county that pay your salary, that pay your salary, have not stepped up and said, "We need to take control of these horses." They're starving to death. Would you like to see? They call me Cece. I just called him Big Red. That's Big Red. That's what we went into. I was called last week to please intervene. I went with my husband, was a trailer, because I thought I was rescuing. I didn't know. I didn't know what I was-
Excuse me, Ms. Pat. We ask that everyone have an opportunity to speak, so we ask that you limit- Yes, ma'am. It's already two minutes, ma'am.
I already can do more.
Do you have somebody else that's going to say anything?
Okay, well, I'll let Carol step in.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be short and brief. I'm not politically red, not anymore. Since I got a government, you can't tell me what to say or what to do. Please take one and pass it around. I've included the Texas- First of all, my name is Mary Carol Harrington. Mary Carol Harrington. Guess what? My folks also founded this county. I'm not afraid to speak out. I pay taxes. I pay your salaries. I can go into all my qualifications, all my great education. But more importantly, I had to rescue my own horses against the ex-husband, who brought my horses back to me only because I had to report him to the SPCA. And thank you, Jesus, for the sheriff of all the counties. He cared. He helped. I got my horses back. They were grade one and two, body category. Go to Grimes County Rescue Network. I'm the founder. I started it. I'm staying. I've experienced harassment in this county because I've been speaking out. Guess what? I'm not going anywhere, folks. My happening. I have more than 40 years of experience in investigative journalism. Guess what, guys? It's not against Cece. There's five. We call them the Iowa Five. Any ethical journalist, and thank God for CAGS and PDGX and the other folks talking. Yeah, I see you out there smirking. There are five. Go to my Facebook page. I was up until 2:00, 3:00 o'clock this morning, talking to somebody in Washington County. Now, my network, you wanna know what else I have on my network? I have a legal team. I have professional rescuers. I have well-known vets. They have stepped up. We're willing to help at our cost, everything free. But no, the owner has decided not anything. That's fine, because we're having press conferences outside, and I have free speech on Facebook, so-
Thank you, Ms. Pat.
Watch me go. You thank me. You're welcome, Mr. Walker.
My name is Amy Short. I live in Brazos County. I don't know a whole lot about horses. But as the daughter of a veterinarian, a former professor at A&amp;M, a dean of the veterinary school at St. George's University in Grenada, I know enough to see animals suffering and know that we should do something about it. I also don't really know what a good old boys' network is. But my question is, why don't the good old boys care about animals? And if they do, can't we just work this out together? I don't know, Mr. Porter. I understand he's been sick, and I'm sorry for that. But when you're sick, that's the time when your families ask for help and accept help. Why can't we just help? I just don't understand. I don't know why we can't put politics aside and whatever else aside and just help the animals. I'd love to be able to do that.
Thank you, Short. Do we have any more public comments at this time?
Yep. I don't know whether I can follow this or not. I'm not here for animals. I'm, well, yes, I'm here for the kids at Grimes County. A whole lot of you people in here know who I am. Bob Goldstein. I'm with CASA, Voices for Children. In the last few years that I have worked with CASA, the number of kids in the Brazos Valley and in Grimes County has increased. And we are making a plea to recruit CASAs that are willing to work with these kids and stand up for them in court. Have you ever felt lost? Have you ever felt alone? That's how these kids feel. They're stripped from their families. They're stripped from everything that they know. Shoved into a court system that they don't understand. They need somebody there with them. CASA will take them, will mentor them, and stay with them until they graduate from high school. And then, even after that. I don't have the numbers. The director for CASA is here, and we're on the agenda. Please pay attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Are there any other public comments? If not, we thank each and every one of you for your concerns. We are now up to our consent agenda items. Item number three, four. Number three and four. Okay. I do have a correction. Ms. Wagner. I do have a correction. On the regular meeting of April 25th, 2018, I'd like to correct number 12. A motion, and Mr. Dobianski second, is for the act extension. So that is the only thing that I saw that I wanted to state. Are there any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve, consent agenda items three and four presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for consent agenda items three, four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move right along to item number five. Voices for Children, CASA of the Brazos Valley Executive Director, Ms. A.J. Reynolds.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is A.J. Reynolds. I am the executive director of CASA, Voices for Children. Thank you, Bob Goldstein, for introduction and encouragement for Grimes County. For those of you who don't know, Voices for Children, CASA of the Brazos Valley is a program that's a nonprofit organization. We recruit and train and support volunteers to act as a guardian at liethem and CPS cases, which is actually a legal role in Texas. In Grimes County, we are proud to say that we're automatically appointed now. Anytime, every time a child is removed from care, moved from their home and placed in foster care, we're automatically appointed. So I did bring out our annual report for last year for y'all to review. I won't go over the whole nine pages. But we've done a lot of innovative things to make sure that we are on top of things as soon as possible. So I will give an example of this morning. When I was looking into the numbers that we were serving, I was also told that we were appointed to a new case this morning at 8:00. So what that means is that an investigation has happened, and it's been determined that children in Grimes County have been abused or neglectified by their caregivers. When that happens, we receive an email from Grimes County with the details of the investigation, what's happened to the children. We get that inputted before lunchtime today into our database. And we're on the phone with a volunteer who's been trained and experienced in going out immediately to check on the kids. So unfortunately, a lot of our kids aren't placed in their communities when they're removed by CPS due to lack of foster homes or family members are in another area. That means that they start a new school tomorrow, if not today. They sometimes have been removed from their homes without getting their things. They don't know where they are. Their parents also don't know where they are. It's a very traumatic, confusing time for everybody. And what we do is help with CPS, but we also start our own investigation as to what's in the best interest of that child as far as their immediate needs. But also, we stay on the case until we resolve the situation. So we work in conjunction with Grimes County, the DA's office, county attorney. Also, we work with CPS, but we're providing an independent voice for children in the courtroom. So we work with parents, families, and try to figure out what the child needs now and then what is in their best interest for the future. And this morning, we'll have a volunteer on that case by lunch.
Thank you so much for the work that you do.
We really appreciate the support from Grimes County. We have a great relationship. We're very happy that we can serve automatically, place volunteers on those cases. We do need more volunteers. I will say, the only other stat that I'll mention is that we saw a doubling in our case appointments in the first quarter of this year compared to last year. So 20 cases last year, we're at 43 right now in the same time period from January.
Wow.
So we are covering two more counties, Leon and Madison, but in every county, we're seeing a huge increase in cases. A lot of the issues are drug issues and mental health issues that we're seeing. But you'll know that ideally, we have CASA volunteers from each county serving on those counties. We do need more volunteers. And our first training, our training in the summer starts June 2nd. And if you want more details, you can go to our website, thebfcbrasis.org, or just give me a call or an email. We do need a lot more volunteers and support from the county, so we would appreciate continued support.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds, I see you have a father fish fundraiser coming up, June 16th, 2018, at, is that Si Miller?
Si, mhm, Si Miller.
Si Miller Pond. And what, where is that located?
So it's right by the police station in College Station.
In College Station.
And it's not even a fundraiser. It's a free event. We do one in College Station and one in Bryan. And we're looking actually to do the father fish event out in Burleson and Grimes County as well. It's just a time to encourage father figures and fathers to bring their kids out. We provide a free fishing pole, bait, and we stop the hunt. So if you can't catch fish with us on Father's Day, there's something seriously wrong. We're gonna have Texas Parks and Wildlife out there teaching kids how to cast and some dads and fish. We're gonna be cleaning the fish. It's just a time to get the community out and provide a free event and encourage healthy family dynamics. So we can prevent kids from getting eaten.
Thank you once again.
You're welcome.
At this time, we're gonna move up to item number six. Elections Officer Deputy Voter Registrar Vanessa Brzezinski. The item is consider and take action to approve payment for Vanessa Brzezinski to attend the 2018 County and District Clerks Association Conference in San Antonio, Texas, June 10th through the 14th. The 2018 LGS Users Conference in Las Con- Las Colinas, Texas, August 8th through the 10th, 2018. And the CDCAT Fall Conference in Georgetown, Texas, September 5th through the 7th, 2018. Ms. Brzezinski.
She's at a conference?
Is there anybody to present on her behalf? Well, can, uh, well-
I do have, she left information.
She forwarded us information, and I did speak to her last week, but she was gonna check on some information for me. So at this time, I guess-
It's the same information. I could get up and say the same thing that she forwarded to you. That's basically what you just read.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Duff. I'll just ask my question, direct them to the auditor then. We know that at this time, we have a current county clerk, and he's already budgeted travel and conference. And I'd asked her, has she had a conversation with you as to wanting to attend some of these conferences?
She has, and I have enough money for myself to go and conferences for my employees. I don't have any extra money to cover her.
Okay. And that's what my concern was, that it's not a budgeted item. So I'd like to hear from the auditor now as to-
I can donate some funds from my office. I don't know how much this is all gonna be. If I had those figures, I would know what we're not asking to pay for it all out of my budget. But I would welcome any department head to volunteer to donate a portion of their travel to cover this for her.
And Commissioner, you didn't ask for my-
I'm gonna ask you next.
You may wanna hear from Ms. Brzezinski about what these conferences will provide, and may also want to talk to her about possible reduction in next year's budget for travel and conferences based upon obtaining these things early. So those would all be things that you would need to talk to her about.
Okay.
I don't, it doesn't appear to be some urgency. Maybe there is, but the first conference is June. So this probably is a, I don't even like the first, this is probably a non-citizen issue that you could put on next week's agenda.
Okay, okay.
Though I guess we are all citizens, right?
Well, in light of that, I wasn't aware that she wasn't gonna be here this week. So I would like to table item to a time when she can come and speak for herself. So if that's okay with everyone here, I'd like to table it until next week's agenda.
Is there a motion on second?
Do we have to motion there?
Table.
It's up to you. You dictate the rules of the game, so. As long as nobody up there is offended, you know, wave or make grunts or noises or whatever.
All right. Well, we'll table the item until next week's agenda. At this time, we'll have item number seven. Elections Officer Registrar, Ms. Rebecca Duff. Item number seven is to consider and take action to conduct the local option liquor election on November 6th, 2018, Justice of the Peace Precinct Number Three, to legalize the sale of all alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages, and ensure the minutes reflect the date. The petition was filed, and reference the petition as applicable, and authorize the commissioners and the county judges signatories. Ms. Duff.
Good morning. Good morning, all voters of Grimes County. I'm Rebecca Duff, the election administrator and voter registrar. I, Rebecca Duff, election administrator, voter registrar for Grimes County, have received and verified the required number of signatures on April 27th, 2018, for local option liquor petition. The petition has met and exceeded the required number of 600 signatures for the measure to legalize the legal sale of all alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages. The qualified voters of the Justice of the Peace Precinct Three hereby respectfully request that a local option election be called in accordance with the terms and provisions of the Texas Election Code Title 17. Therefore, I, Rebecca Duff, am requesting that this be reflected, the reference of petition is sufficient to conduct the local option liquor election on a uniform election date specified under the section of 41.001A of the code. The uniform election date is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in any year, which will be November the 6th, 2018. Any other questions?
Ms. Duff, like I was questioning, maybe you can explain why it has to be under Justice of the Peace Precinct Three?
That is the code of the West. No, no, it's not. Basically, it is. But it's the Texas Election Code that governs us. And every time we have a census count, our lines change. And this has been from the dawning of time with Grimes County. And so therefore, the Justice of the Peace lines have changed. And that area, that's one of the last few areas of Grimes County that was dry. So this is very historical.
Okay. So this is all the precincts are the lines that are drawn for Justice of the Peace Precinct Three?
Yes.
Because it's in his area, territory?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified. I did speak to Judge LaFleur about it when they came around with the signature. So I just wanted to clarify what has been done.
It gets a little bit confusing due to the fact that we do have this redistricting and all. But I think I defer to the county clerk. He was in the middle of this while that-
Just to make a couple of statements, it does get very confusing. A local option can come about on, I believe, three ways. By municipality, by a JP precinct, or countywide. Now, one thing that, this area, JP Three, covers an area that is already wet and is already licensed for all alcoholic beverages. We ran into this with an election many, many years ago when this area, most of this area that Becky's talking about, a guy petitioned, and he went for off-premises only. And that took in part of Navasota and part of your precinct, Barbara, at the time, and people got in an uproar about it. This election has no impact whatsoever on the area that is already wet for all sales of alcoholic beverages. Doesn't matter which way this election goes. So those people can rest at ease. And I'm sure a lot of them probably signed the petition. But in my view, it includes the one little area of Grimes County that is dry, and it will take that area in and all the area south of Navasota that is off-premises only. So personally, I think it's a good thing.
Is this the only area? You said the one area. I thought we also had this at a recent election.
There's another area toward the Shiro that's still the same thing.
All right.
These people had to turn in 600 signatures. They did a great job. They turned in 703. So that's a lot of work.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Duff, for the explanation. Thank you. Mr. Paskett, thank you. It is an action item. I would, I'll make the motion to conduct the local liquor option election on November 6th and to legalize the sale of all alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages, and ensure the minutes reflect the date. The petition was filed, which was?
April 27th.
April 27th, 2018. And reference the petition as applicable and authorize the county commissioners and county judges signatories.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Duff. We'll move on to item number eight. Consider and prove the renewal contract for Pitney Bowls and authorize County Judge's signatory human resource director, Ms. Lucy Pope, please.
This contract is just a renewal contract for our postage machine for Pitney Bowls. And I just need your approval and keep doing the postage for the county.
All right, did it increase any, or is it?
Yeah, it did increase a little.
Was it significant?
Well, last year's was, um, last year's, it was 768 a quarter, and now it went up to 1,038. But Pitney Bowls is very good about it. Something breaks down, they come on out and get it, you know, repaired. And I did send the contract to John C. He did look it over, and he said he didn't see anything wrong with it.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
So this is a pretty important piece of equipment that you have.
Yes, it is. Very important.
This is where the, all the offices come in, and they can mail from here.
We do all the mailings for the county.
Are there any questions? If not, I make the motion that we renew the contract for Pitney Bowls and authorize County Judge's signatory.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll hear from Grimes County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Daniel Caswell. The item is consider and take action to approve the inmate medical contract for the next 12 months, beginning June 1st, 2018. Good morning.
I talked to the county judge, who obviously isn't here today. We discussed, they're gonna notice the numbers are a little bit different in this contract. Moving our nurse to full-time, because we have not allowed to, we have only have part-time medical workers today.
Okay. So let me ask you this. You say you discussed with the judge, and you have a full-time nurse now?
We do not.
You don't?
We haven't been with years.
Okay. Is the nurse in this contract?
Yes. Basically, they're wanting to raise our cost 13,000 a year with the full-time instead of part-time.
Okay.
And we've got money in our budget that we can give up to cover 10,000 of that cost. We can take it out of our maintenance contracts because we have on-staff maintenance now, general cutting. So we don't use that line of budget anymore.
Okay.
I'd rather move it to medical than to set a nurse stay.
So you're saying you have, the increase will be 13,000 for the full-time nurse?
Yes, ma'am. It's basically going to $10,000 a month, exactly. They wanted one, and I told them if they could get it to $10,000 even, we talked to them, and they agreed to do that. So that includes the full-time nurse and all prescription- So that includes the full-time nurse and all prescription medications except for Crohn's, retinol, renal failure, HIV, a few things that we still have to pay for. But about 99% of the medicine for their makeup is included in this contract also.
Okay, and that is an increase of what?
If you go back and look at the last years.
So all of the things that said amended and replaced, those were revisions?
Yes, ma'am, the first couple pages, the first three pages are what was changed from the original contract.
By having a full-time staff nurse, it will reduce some of the liability, potential liability?
Yes, and she's already saved us a lot of money because we knocked out about 60 ER runs a year that we were paying for out of the county budget because she handles it in-house. Otherwise, when she's not there, emergency room over and over again because they play games. They makes, do play games. So there's a lot of liability on having her part-time if something happens. And we haven't made the attempt to have a full-time nurse, you know, a full-time facility.
So did the increase in the inmate population, did that change?
We actually decreased our numbers. It's been down surprisingly this year. Can't explain why, but it's given us time to take care of some of the other problems we had in the facility, closed down tanks that we could use for maintenance. It's just, it's been lopsided, we lowered our numbers.
Well, it could be a good thing.
It is a good thing. And we lowered our number from 76 to 65 is our base number for inmate population. Last year was 107,712 for all the medications and services plus a part-time nurse. This year, they're going to 120,000 even, so it's 12,300 dollars difference to get the nurse there full-time. So it's right at 1,000 dollars a month.
Okay, and so you're good for this year, the remainder of the?
Well, her contract and the contract, they provide our pharmacy, our doctor, our nurse, they provide everything. The entire medical services for our entire facility functions company. And if we don't renew this, then maybe June 1st, they leave, expires.
Okay, I guess my question was for the, until October, you have enough in your budget? Did I hear you say to cover the increase? Because this contract starts June 1st.
Right.
Four months' worth of additional?
I had to actually talk to them to find out if we could cover the extra couple of months. Because they are not on, obviously, the contract with our regular budget. They renew on June 1st every year.
Ms. Mayor, did you hear the?
I heard that. I'll have to look at their budget and see.
To be able to pay them through October, I don't think we have the money to cover it. We're going to move something from? Right, we're going to move 10,000 out of our maintenance contracts. If we don't use that, we can have in-house now.
And that's for the remainder of the year? We were talking about the remainder of the year, if this contract starts June 1st?
I'm sure we can cover it. We could probably move money somewhere. We may have to come back and see you to get it done. But at some point, we've got to start approving this June 1st to June 1st because that's their contracts instead of October, October was. If anything changes, we're stuck out for a few months. That's medical, obviously.
So we're, let me make sure I understand. You have the money to cover it? It's just going to need, we're just going to change some of the line items to make sure?
I'm 100% sure we have the money to move from some other places just at some point to make that happen. We'll have to come back and see.
Yes.
I mean, we've got revenue we've generated that I still haven't used because at this point, we haven't had to have a warrant file. We could always move that money if it's still sitting there in case of an emergency.
All right. Thank you, and you'll get with the Auditus Department and y'all will make sure.
Right, we'll find the money somehow.
It'll come back as a line item transfer or budget amendment.
Depends, it'll probably be a line item transfer. It just depends on if it goes from one apartment to the other.
Okay.
Or will it still be a line item? It'll be a line item transfer.
Well, thank you, Lieutenant Caswell.
Commissioner, can I make the suggestion that if you all approve it today, will you ask them about doing another amendment on one page to extend the term until the end of September? We address it now, and then we'll have a decision.
Our medical agreement before we had run through?
Yes.
Fifteen months to the full, whatever, so we can get to the end of our time.
So we don't face this issue every year.
Okay.
I could work with them, and if we agree on the price, they should be able to do it through October 1st. Set that same one for price, and that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, and that's with an amendment to the?
Right, and I'm not saying that's before you today. I'm just saying if you all approve the amendment that exists today, it would, I think, be who was to have them ask for another amendment to extend it three more months.
Okay.
Or four months, whatever the number is, so we don't have this issue of being in limbo.
And it will be in line with our calendar.
Right, I guess what I'm asking is if you'll approve this current rate, will you allow me to call them and extend it to October 1st for next year? So when I'm always several months out trying to figure out how to make it?
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Commissioners, I've been asked to tell you one other thing or provide some information, let's say. I hate to say tell you. If you are approving the line item transfer with the contract today, then there's no requirement that the line item transfer come back before you as line item transfers typically do. So if you're approving that, it may not come back before you as a specific line item approval issue. Unless you want it to. Now, if you say, hey, I want to see that, then you can say, I want to see it.
I was going to say, I'd like to see, just make sure. I mean, it's up to the court to decide. All right, with that being said, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the inmate medical contract for the next 12 months, beginning June 1st, 2018, with the request to extend it to end of September.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the inmate medical contract for the next 12 months with an extension to the 2017. Would that be a 17 contract?
No, ma'am, every year we renew, so this would be our 18.
18, okay.
Half of 18, half of 19.
All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. At this time, we'll hear from Grimes County Sheriff's Office once again on item number 10, Consider and Take Action to Approve a Mini Grant Contract for Body Warn Recording Systems and Authorize County Judge's Signatory. Now?
You're Grimes County. You're Grimes County, you said Brazos County.
Did I say Brazos?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry. All right, Grimes County Sheriff's Office. And while he's coming?
You know, my great son of the country.
Oh, that's right.
So I wasn't aware of this from a beer. I don't think they was either.
Okay, I did speak to him, though.
Okay. Commissioner, I don't have the paper specifically on that grant, but I think we just?
Well, I can highlight some of the items he told me that changed. Would you like to have my copy? I'll look at yours. He said the difference between the original, this is an amended grant contract. We had to reduce the number of body worn cameras we were going to get in order to meet the cash match requirement. And that number changed to 3,087 dollars is our match for the grant. So that's basically what we are amending in this contract, in this resolution, this actual resolution. I didn't have the original.
Original cash match, I think, was 4,000?
Yes, it came down.
It came down 1,000 or so.
All right.
And how many body cameras did it reduce?
He didn't say how many body cameras it reduced. He just told me about the match, and he couldn't give me the number at that time.
Yeah, I didn't have that number. I guess it was a loser if we could qualify for it.
It is, it had to align with what they were providing you, so.
I move to approve, amend the grant contract for body worn recording systems and authorize County Judge's Signatory.
Second.
All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I had a question to you, Mr. Pope. If it has to be signed, if they happen to have signatures be prior to the judge's return, should I say, should that be in the motion?
The court can always designate one member of the court to sign on behalf of the court. Just so happens it's the judge because he sits in the middle and we know he's the presiding officer. But you as a court can designate any one of you. The question then becomes the entity who wants that document. Are they going to have concerns over just having one commissioner sign? You could write out beside that, presiding officer, presiding officer of the day, or you could authorize everyone here to sign off.
Okay, I didn't know what the urgency was on some of these, especially the grant.
If I was sitting on the court where you are and you made the effort to be here, let's say, and you wanted to take action, and your action was no less formal or no less valid than the full court, there's no reason the three of you can't sign or you can't designate one of you to sign today rather than sitting around waiting for the other two folks to show up potentially, or at least the judge to show up.
Okay.
And I'm not saying they're doing, the other folks are doing anything wrong. I'm just saying your action is valid, or else I would have left the meeting a long time ago.
But thank you, thank you. If there's any urgency, then you can bring it before the court. We are now up to item number 11, Road and Bridge. And I don't see Mr. Walker. Oh, there you are. I'm so used to him being right there. And this item is to consider and take action to approve, can you say that word for me? Revilla?
Revelova? Revelova.
Thank you, Revelova LLC Pipeline Installation in the County Right-Away and Authorize County Judge's Signatory.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a new pipeline that's proposed to be constructed across Grimes County. We have representatives from Revelova here. There's been a fair amount of confusion about this project since we first started talking about it. Revelova is an LLC of which Enterprise Products is the major partner. Originally, when we were contacted, the information was coming out under the name of Enterprise. Now they've got their LLC form, it's under Revelova. It's the same pipeline. To further add confusion, the pipeline alignment changed dramatically from what we originally saw. So this is the official pipeline application today. It comes into the northwest quadrant of the county, off the end of County Road 106, and will exit the county just south of Highway 30 going into Walker County. It's planned to be a 24-inch pipeline for fruit products?
Nitric acid.
Nitric acid, yeah. There will be seven road crossings involved, which we have a permit. This permit process includes approval of their road crossings. These will all be board. They are proposing to meet all of our standards for road crossings. So I'm recommending that it be approved. To further add to the confusion, because of the way their project limits are broken up, there are one more road crossing in Grimes County that's in the adjacent project. So we'll have a separate permit application come in later on for that segment of the project. You can handle by different folks and have one more crossing to be approved in the future. But he will go all the way across the county eventually. It's not going to just stop there at Highway 30. Permitting wise, there are two different project sections, two different groups, probably two different contractors. So the packaging is going to be a little bit cumbersome as far as we go. Other than that, the other part of this, once they have selected a contractor, they will come back to us through the contractor to obtain a road use agreement where we'll get a chance to look at what roads they could use for their haul routes, assess the condition of the bridges, structure of the road itself, make sure that A, it's suitable and safe to use, F, that the interests of the county are protected as far as maintaining those roads during the construction process. Good thing about this project, it's a short construction duration. It's not going to be like the transmission lines that go on for years. Y'all are anticipating being in the middle of next year, before first quarter?
Second quarter, it'll be flowing product.
Second quarter.
Yeah, so what will be out of the county wait before the restoration?
So they'll be starting this summer, and in, you know, less than nine months' time, they'll be finished and gone. So the pain associated with this will be fairly short compared to some of the other projects we'll deal with. With all that said, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. If not, I'll see gentlemen to step in and address specific issues.
So you say that they, this project will take into consideration all of our requirements?
Yes.
With regard to the construction? In the event that there is some sort of damage or something needing repaired, will they bear all the cost of that?
Yes, that is addressed in the road use agreement. There are, there's a bonding requirement, and there are provisions in there that make them responsible for any damages they cause. And that'll be a separate document and probably be issued in the name of their contractor. But it's a package deal with this permit.
Is this our agreement?
Yes, ma'am. They used our permit form and just modified it to accommodate the number of crossings they had. And they provided detailed sketches of the crossings themselves, locations. Lot more information than our permit form actually provides.
Commissioner, is this in your precinct?
Yes, yes. No, they have all the information available, for sure. Good job of that.
I think their esteemed attorney would say we really don't have an option to not approve pipelines. We just need, we have the option to make sure they do it according to our standards.
I move to approve Revelova LLC Pipeline Installation in the County Right-Away and Authorize County Judge's Signatory.
I second. We have a motion to approve Pipeline Installation in the County Right-Away and Authorize County Judge's Signatory. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number 12, Consider and Take Action to Allow San Bernard Electric to Place a Pole and a Guide Wire Within the Right-Away of Matt?
Megan.
Megan Road and Authorize County Judge's Signatory.
This is a much smaller scale utility project, just for overhead electric. They're replacing the service to a single residence, the existing pole, and the service line will be replaced, but they are going across the county road right away, so they are still required to get a permit for that. I would recommend approval. Again, they meet all of our criteria.
Meet the minimum clearance.
Scott will have any questions?
I move to allow San Bernard Electric to place a pole and guide wire within the right-of-way of Megan Road and authorize County Judge's Signatory.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And you made the motion right. All right, we'll move up to our Road and Bridge report by Mr. Harry Walker.
Thank you, ma'am. Crew's been busy. We had five of our grain oil operators who were in training last week for advanced motor grader training. This is training provided by UT Arlington and no cost to the county. So that's a great deal, and the guys that took it did tell me it was worthwhile.
Did they have to travel to?
We had them here, out behind the sheriff's department. We provide, we provided three motor graders. we provided three motor graders for use, and they actually went back there and cut ditches and screwed stuff up and everything in the back area that's unused behind the Sheriff's Department, behind the shooting range back there. They don't charge us for the training, which is great, and the instructors know what they're doing, they do a good job. Elsewhere, we've been working on continuing our project on 141. We've shifted from the, the bridge corridor portion has been completed, that's reopened, and we're working on preparing the road for chip sealing that the town of Ebydas had requested last, last fall. The town paid some materials on that, we provide labor equipment under developed agreement, and they are also paying for a portion of the cost of that corridor structure. The, we're preparing, we're starting, we have been focusing on finishing up, cleaning up and putting the roads back in shape that were affected by the Center Point project and also across Texas Project on the north end of the county. Both of those entities are within a matter of weeks of being out of the county, the lines are in service, and they're just doing restoration and cleanup, and we're coming in behind them and putting those roads back in shape. We are also starting to prepare some of the roads that are on our list for chip sealing this summer, trying to get those in shape, we'll be shifting into that here over the next few weeks. Grade oil crew, they have been hampered a little bit here, their grade oil has been down for a while, but they're back in operation, they're continuing to help out on 141, but we've had some equipment issues there. Side ditching crew is continuing to do well, they're up to 138 miles for the, for the year. Really pleased with the way that's working out. We did meet, we have meetings with the folks from Revelova about the pipeline, and then Dave Lilly and I have met with folks from FEMA and TIDOM regarding the, some of the grant possibilities associated with Hurricane Harvey. And we'll be meeting, we have another meeting tomorrow with Grant Works regarding some grant possibilities associated with 2016 flooding. So, we've got, we've been approved for grants for 2015, we're waiting for kickoff meetings from GLO on that. Pursuing grants for 2016 flooding, we're still working on getting reimbursed through FEMA for damages from 2017 Harvey, and we're working on grant, so opportunities associated with 2017. A lot of grant stuff going on, I'm starting to get brain fogged with it. Other than that, it's a good, it's a good problem to have.
Will any of those?
We have some opportunities here to get some help on some of the issues we've had in the past, and we're trying to pursue those bigger stuff.
Will any of those affect our industrial park?
Possibly. For the most part, they are, for the most part, they are associated with roads and facilities that were damaged in these different declared disasters. However, there are some programs that are just more geared to general planning and help prevent future floodwater drain, some of the hydraulic studies that need to be done, those kind of things. Almost all of these grant programs have some sort of requirements for a certain level of low and moderate income, you know, residents within the area. So, and some of those areas in industrial park, I know, have been rated fairly highly in Afrod in the past, and we had some damages down there, so that's one of the areas we're looking at for some of these opportunities.
Good.
And I think they may, may actually score fairly well. It's all competitive as far as the grants, of course, the reimbursements from FEMA for the, the direct damages and restoration we do is not a competitive, it's just a matter of processing the paperwork. David Lilly is working real hard with them, trying to get all the documentation provided, and everything square, and I should get those circuit numbers checks to come in too.
Thank you, and Mr. Lilly, both. If it's possible, could we get your chip seal list?
I'll send that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. At this time, we're up to item number 13, and it is to take action to revise, review and take action to revise the Grimes County Chapter 381 Guidelines and Criteria, see attachment number 13. I will refer that over to Mr. Johnson.
There are new members of the court that are here since the last time I think we addressed this, and I'll try to give a little bit of history. Typically, the Commissioner's Court utilizes tax abatements to encourage businesses to locate here. There rose the issue some time ago about whether a 381 policy or 381, let's say, provision existed to encourage business to locate here, and the reason the question was asked, because the city of Neve Sota was interested in putting a business over in the city and wanted to know if the county would also be able to offer some kind, some kind of tax break to further encourage that business to locate there. If you want to consider a tax abatement for any particular business, there has to be a reinvestment zone designated, which is the location where the business is going to be or the improvement to the business is going to be. To designate a reinvestment zone, you have to have a public here, which means the public has an, has to have an opportunity to address the court and indicate whether or not the public agrees with the designation of an area as a reinvestment zone, which, you know, means typically that the public is given an opportunity to appear and provide input, whether it be positive or negative, about the possibility of tax abatement, meaning some entity doesn't have to pay taxes or absorb taxes for an extended period of time, based upon the fact that they're going to bring in business, bring in new jobs, bring in new value, which may increase the tax rolls, all those kind of issues that come along with a tax abatement. Now, if you grant, and I'm gonna call it a 381 grant, and I'll tell you where that term comes from, but if you give a 381 grant to a company, there's no requirement that you designate a reinvestment zone. You can hand a 381 grant out to, in theory, to a lot of different people or entities. Chapter 381 of the Local Government Code spells out, and I'll just read you a little bit of it if I might, just so that we can get an idea of where our guidelines came from, and then you all will be better equipped probably to talk about whether revisions are appropriate. Three, this is 381.004, subsection B. To stimulate business and commercial activity in a county, the Commissioner's Court of a county may develop and administer a program. And then there's a list of several different types of programs. Number one, for state or local economic development. Number two, for small or disadvantaged business development. Number three, to stimulate, encourage, and develop business location and commercial activity in the county. Number four, to promote or advertise the county in its vicinity or conduct a solicitation program to attract conventions, visitors, and businesses. Number five, to improve the extent to which women and minority businesses are awarded county contracts. Number six, to support comprehensive literacy programs for the benefit of county residents. Or seven, for the encouragement, promotion, improvement, and application of the arts. To do that, according to subsection C, the Commissioner's Court may contract with another entity for the administration of the program, authorize the program to be administered on the basis of county commissioner precincts, use county employees or funds for the program, and accept contributions, gifts, or other resources to develop and administer the program. There is a discussion after that about Commissioner's Court may support a children's advocacy center, may develop and administer a program for tax abatements. We already knew that, it's gotta comply provisions of the tax code. The final subsection, which was added not too long ago, maybe 2000, it looks like it may have been 2003, around the time we were discussing the last, I think we were discussing this in '05, or maybe it was '08 that we were discussing 381 grant, but this subsection H was a change that was made to the original text, and it is the basis for the program that you have adopted. And it says, "The Commissioner's Court may develop and administer a program authorized by subsection B," which are the seven things that I read to you, "for making loans and grants of public money and providing personnel and services of the county." All that to say, when the county was in, when the commissioners were previously asked for the business in Neve Sota to provide a 381 grant, there didn't exist guidelines by which the Commissioner's Court had previously agreed to follow. I was aware of various 381 programs that existed in other counties. One that I distinctly recall was a grant to obtain a helicopter. And obviously, I don't think the court, or the county is prepared to obtain a helicopter, so you're probably not interested in that today. Point being is, when I read that, "The court may develop and administer a program for making loans and grants of public money," and that's what you can shorten that down to, but it needs to be for the promotion of the things that we listed, economic development, even potentially children's advocacy center, application of arts, literacy programs. I think the court to this point, or at least the court when the court addressed this years ago, was interested in economic development and trying to attract businesses to come to the county. All I can say, it doesn't have to be that alone, but the guidelines that we developed are, when we were looking at this issue, I had a real concern, as we have addressed before, about due process, about equal protection. If you had Bob, and I'm not, not this Bob, but any Bob that showed up and said, "I want a grant, and here's, here's the helicopter that I think we ought to get," not that this Bob would ask for a helicopter, but then you had, and the court said, the court said we're gonna do it, and then you had Suzie who showed up and said, "I want this project over here," and you told Suzie, "No." Well, then you're gonna have to have a reason for why you told her no. What's different in the two projects? What's the distinction? And to avoid that, it is most often the case that the court should adopt a policy or guidelines that folks have to come into conformity with to be considered for the particular grant that we're talking about. So, we as a county developed our own guidelines, and they're very similar to abatements, but it's a much shorter term. Is it five years or two years?
Two.
Two years. Two years instead of the 10 years that abatements are for. And so, it is, if you want to attract businesses and you don't wanna have a hearing for, to declare an area of pub, reinvestment zone, and you want to provide some break, but if you want it to be a shorter period of time than an abatement, what this court previously adopted was a policy to provide for 381 grants to businesses that are looking to either originally locate or to expand their businesses here and create, increase tax revenue or tax base, as well as increased number of employees. So, I think you have the policies and attachments in front of you, the guidelines in front of you, and would suggest that you become familiar with those because they are yours, or that is yours, and you're entitled to change that however you desire. We tried to fashion in a way that is very similar to the abatement program, but that it provides something that's a little more attractive, it's a faster procedure to obtain it, though the downside for the business is, it's a shorter period of time that they obtain the grant. Now, we based the grant on what they would've paid in ad valorem, so it's very similar to a tax abatement, but it's different in the regard that with an abatement, you don't pay the tax, okay? The appraisal district tells us what the tax is, they don't pay the tax. With this grant, they pay the tax, you reimburse them the amount of the tax that they pay. It's a short, but as I said, it's a much shorter period of time. One of the things that was a drawback to the 381 when it was originally conceived, even with the guidelines that we have, was it required us as a county to make sure that we were on top of whether they, the company was complying with the guidelines on an ongoing basis. Were we sending somebody out there to make sure they were maintaining the number of employees? Did we send somebody out there to make sure they constructed the improvements up to the value that they told us that it was going to be? Or at least someone pulling the appraisal district value and doing a comparison of year before and year after to be sure that number had the increase that they represented that would exist? I often had concerns about, and you hear me all the time, expressed concerns about the lack of continuity from the court. People pass away, people get voted out, people quit, whatever it is, people, folks on that court change, as well as folks in our offices, the folks that will help you make sure that someone's awake at the wheel, there are people changing all the time. So, if we don't have somebody that calendars this for a review next year, it will go under the radar, as many things do, and likely, we will continue to give them the money because they'll be knocking at the door for the grant, but the question will remain as to whether we have reviewed to make sure that they've lived up to their end of the bargain. So I wrote, I raised those issues when this came up because it was different than how abatements were being handled, handled at that point. We had the appraisal district that was helping us monitor whether businesses were complying with their obligations under abatements. We've now been told, as you recall, maybe at least two of you, maybe not Commissioner Cox, Mr. Bennecke stood at that podium and said, essentially, "I'll continue to be here to help, but as far as monitoring these things on a regular basis, we've done that as a privilege or a benefit to you all in the past, don't expect that same help from this point forward." It's never an obligation of the appraisal district. So, that being the case, now, they do, I think, still send out a survey and allow the business to fill out the survey and make sure the business signs saying that they're living up to their obligations, and that may be all that, that really was done before. I just wanna drive home the point that you as a court have an obligation to either oversee this as a five-member body, designate one person or two to do it as a committee, or find some other party that either should warrant it to you that you can make do it, or beg another elected official to do it on your behalf. If you don't do that, then, you know, I think it's a bad policy to go signing abatements or 381 grants and then writing it off hoping the business is gonna live up to their obligations. So, we have in place the guidelines that you see there in front of you, they had a, they have a sunset provision in them, so they were supposed to have sunsetted in 15, in 2015. There was, the provision indicates there was supposed to have been a review by our...
Page 13.
Yeah, section 10, page 13. Guidelines and criteria are effective January 1, 2010, will remain in force until December 31, 2015, at which time all grants created pursuant to these provisions will be reviewed by the county to determine whether the goals have been achieved. Based on that review, guidelines and criteria may be modified, renewed, or eliminated. Doesn't necessarily say that they were to go away, just indicates there was supposed to be a review. Well, like everything else, same issue of continuity, and somebody's gotta put this on their calendar, and you gotta hope that somebody stays around, or they're gonna give that information to the next somebody. That being the case, we're now in a position where we need to review these and make sure the current court is happy with the provisions. Again, this is entirely your policies. If there's something that you want to change, then you have the right to do that. We can talk about it from constitutional issue to process equal protection, we can talk about it from a policy issue, whether it makes sense, if it's a good idea, we can talk about it from a legal issue as to whether it violates any statutes or common law theories. We certainly talk about all of those things, and I'm happy to do that, but to my knowledge, this continues to be the policy that you want because nobody has proposed a change. So, it is before you now for that review, I think, for you to bless it and say, "Fine by me." Since you haven't had this history, because I know I haven't had this conversation with Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Mallett, I've had pieces of this conversation with Commissioner Walker, and I know she's been familiar with the history. So, doesn't mean you have to do all of that today, just, this may be the introduction to it, but I would, I would like for the court to comment on whether this is the policy that you want to continue, and us to put new dates in there as far as when the next review is going to be.
I'd like to talk about the administration of it. We talked about this a little bit a while back when Mr. Bennecke was here, and we talked about it at that time, as far as oversight, maybe this should fall upon the Economic Development Director on his calendar also. In this particular document, it talks about the precinct commissioner and the precinct relevant... and the precinct, uh, relevant, uh, of the relevant property is located in, shall submit to the Commissioners Court. So, in the past, previously with, uh, HTRI, they did submit it to not only the, uh, it was located in my precinct, so they presented to me. They also presented to the judge's office and to the tax office. And, uh, they did complete their grant of two years. Um, so, with that, we, we, I feel like, I don't know if that has to be in there, that wording, that the Economic Development Director shall also help oversee this, but it already states that the precinct commissioner of the precinct, um, annually submit this to the Commissioners Court. So, I guess that's that person that's gonna put their eyes on the, uh, location and the amount of, of, uh, property they have located there. And the number of employees was only one employee. The other, uh, minimum investment is, uh, five million dollars, which is the same as the tax abatement code. Um, the only issue that I've seen so far in here is this, at the time that it was written and adopted in two thousand ten, talked about number four on page two, the business being located in an incorporated area. I, I would hope that we could change that to, um, either remove it or unincorporated areas and incorporate.
Tell me where that is.
Number two, number four, minimum requirement.
Page four, you said?
Page two.
Page two?
Oh, page two.
I'm sorry, page two.
Sure. Well, um, we wrote it, so we can change it.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can modify that if the court wants to do that. And as far as the provision for the Economic Development Coordinator or whatever the name we've given to Johnny's office or whatever, what he provides for the county, I would suggest, let's make the change here, but we also may wanna consider that change in the contract with the chamber.
Okay.
To say that, and I assume that means that you know the chamber is willing to do that.
Yes. Um, how would you word that, number four, the business to be located within an...
Uh, I'd word it by striking it out.
Strike it out, that's what I wanted. Can we strike it out? Okay.
You bet you would.
Was there a reason it was put in the start with?
Uh, I will tell you this, that I think, I've slept since then, but I think the reason that, and we, and I'll take responsibility, I drafted this, but it was based upon input from the court, I think it was to try to make sure we had identified, um, or limited the number of folks that were gonna come, show, were gonna show up asking for a grant. 'Cause that's what this is, this is giveaway. And you're giving it away because you think it's gonna stimulate economic development. And so, we were trying to limit, uh, how many folks might show up in that line. And the more things that you take out, the more folks that might show up. So, that's, that remains the issue.
And, um, I would like to, uh, add to that with the growth of the county, and we talked about the economic development out in the various areas. Um, I think that removing that or striking that would, um, give us incentives to offer businesses, and this isn't, uh, five million dollars is quite a bit of money, so you're not gonna have everybody just coming, you know? But I would like to say that we are being approached right now by a project, which is fifty million, and will provide jobs with a starting pay of seventy-five thousand and part-time forty thousand, uh, with the total number of jobs being anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five jobs upon its arrival. So, time is of the essence, to say the least, and, uh...
So, you want me to make, you wanna move today to make those changes so it'll be ready to go?
Yes, they've already asked us to present the tax abatement guidelines and also these guidelines, and, um, so we, that's why they're before you.
Sure, no, and I'm happy to do it, and I wanna be sure that I'm clear. I'm a proponent of incentives to, um, make Grimes County better. And, uh, by having businesses that provide jobs for employees and, uh, also have people visit our county, or at least, uh, potential to create more products or services that make the lives of folks around us better or increase the tax revenue such that, um, you all can use dollars to make the services for the folks better. I'm a proponent of, so I don't wanna say that it's a giveaway without some benefit to the county. I just meant that the more restrictions that you put on it, the fewer number of folks will show up in that line, is what I'm saying.
And we have, um, the company we're being approached by has, has a history with Grimes County of being a good, um, employer and a good steward to the abatement codes. Uh, I'd also like to say that, um, I don't know if you, a minimum of one permanent position must be added to the entities' employee base, but we're good with that. But, all of that to say that time, like I said once again, is of the essence 'cause we presented them this, not knowing that it needed to be updated or...
I, I have a conference Thursday and Friday, but I have confidence in my staff that this change can be made today.
Okay. Thank you, Corey. Those are my concerns, and I feel confident that if it's been, um, I look over it, I don't know if anybody else has any questions about it, I relinquish my thoughts.
I, I think it's a great idea. We've got people that qualify to, or meet the requirements. One thing, Corey, whenever you're making the changes, page fourteen, you might wanna take a look at that. I know you'll probably catch it, but I'm just...
Page fourteen?
Oh, it's the old contract.
All of that will change, Ryan.
All of that will change, yes. Uh, speaking of lack of continuity, all different members of the court, right?
Okay.
Mr. Paskett's the same, though.
That's a good thing. Glad you're still here, Mr. Paskett.
Yes, you're right.
Let me see.
Uh, my staff, my Cracker Jack staff has reminded me that, um, and I've thrown this out before, and I, again, I'm not saying that I am a proponent of it, it's just a matter for the court to consider, and to the degree that it's related to the item that's on the agenda. In chapter three eighty-one, in fact, three eighty-one point zero one discusses that the judge can appoint a county industrial commission, um, and it would be similar to, um, I don't know if it's the Economic Foundation, uh, it may be, there's another entity in Navasota. But when you're looking at, um, people or entities that could oversee these three eighty-one grant agreements or even tax abatement agreements, uh, that may be something that you wanna consider. So, uh, if I haven't sent you a copy of that, it's, uh, three eighty-one point zero zero one, uh, feel free to take a look at it, and some of this is available. And oftentimes, as we've had the discussion, to the degree that you can put, uh, folks to work who want to be involved in what the county's doing and certainly making the county better, uh, and they're not, we're not talking about, uh, the folks on the dais, we're talking about folks in the community, and you, it's an additional way to take input. Uh, it may certainly be something that you wanna consider, and then to have an entity that would oversee these specific things, um, maybe you get more continuity with that body. Maybe you don't, 'cause, uh, you know, volunteers oftentimes come and go just as we do. So, I throw that out.
I have no objection to that, I just, um, once again, wanna reiterate time's of the essence.
You bet, but there are only so many times that something comes up where I can talk about relevant things that I spotted that, uh, may be of benefit that, uh, I certainly would not expect everyone to have read three eighty-one point zero zero one. Local Government Code.
Well, uh, with that being said, um, perhaps we could, um, include that at a later date or...
There's no pressure, I would just suggest that the members, that you all take a look at and see if it's something you're interested in. It specifically says the judge may appoint the commission, so it would be something the judge, I would think, would have to be in favor of.
Okay.
Uh, but, you know, it's certainly worthy of consideration, the more, you know, I don't know how many times we've had an abatement in the last thirteen years, uh, but it's been less than five, um, but you may see that increase. With two forty-nine and various other things that are going on, you may see multiple businesses wanting to locate here, and you may be out there beating the bushes and say, "Look, come to the county, we've got these abatements or these three eighty-ones, we've got things that will make this an attractive place for you besides just being Grimes County." And, uh, if that's the case, and more of these show up, it may be that, uh, this commission is something that you all desire. So, no, I don't, I'm not asking you to put it on the future, but I'm just making a suggestion that when you're looking around for people to monitor these things, those may be some people that, uh, could take on that obligation.
All right. Are there any further discussions? Well, if there are no further questions, I'd like to make the motion that we revise the Grimes County Chapter three eighty-one guidelines and criteria and include the changes to the documents as discussed.
Same.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item number fourteen. Uh, Mr. County Attorney, consider and take action to reimburse Sheriff Gunn Sal a hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-one cents as payment for Chaplain Mac Vaughn's attendance at the church security planning and intruder awareness response training on January nineteenth and twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Commissioners, I was asked to place this item on the agenda. Uh, my recollection is, this may have been paid by the county, and there was concern the auditor had, and I think the sheriff repaid the amount to the county. And so, now the question has come before you as to whether that repayment was required, uh, better said, whether or not to issue to the sheriff a check that, as you see the amount that's written there. Um, you have, I think you have, I don't know if you have an attachment that indicates, um, what the course was. Okay, um, I, uh, I was asked some time ago to provide a written opinion regarding my thoughts on the issue, and, uh, essentially, the conclusion of my opinion is that if the elected official claims that the expenditure is for a public purpose, and keep in mind, this happens all the time when you're facing the question of, is an expenditure for a public purpose? Uh, you all spend money to CASA, you spend money to numerous entities that may not even be county-controlled, and it's giving taxpayer dollars to an entity outside of Grimes County. So, I don't want you to think this, this is a one-off deal. Um, you, you face the issue of if somebody buys something for their office, and I'll use the, uh, 'cause it comes to mind, they're buying a mini-fridge for their office. Is that a public purpose? Is that something that you all approve? How deep in the weeds do you get, and when do you, when do you decide, "I don't think this is a public purpose, and we're not gonna pay it"? As is the case with every bill, and we've been reminded of it, uh, so sharply, I guess, here in recent past, since we have to have meetings every week, that your eyes should look at every bill. And after you approve of it, it is still within the purview of the auditor to consider whether or not she believes it's valid or lawful. In this particular case, I think the question was asked of the auditor's office, and the auditor's office didn't believe that this was an appropriate expenditure. Um, I hate that this matter has come to this, and it's a question of, should, was the expenditure for this course for the benefit of Mac Vaughn, who is the chaplain for the sheriff's office, was it for a public purpose? It will be for the sheriff's office, I see, uh, Mr. Cook is here today, or deputy, or I'm not even, I don't know your title, lieutenant, sorry, lieutenant, geez, I wanna, I should salute you. He's here to tell you and talk about what the course provided, but in all reality, if you all believe there was a public purpose in that Pastor Vaughn was better equipped to provide, um, chaplain services to the sheriff's office, or better equipped to know how to handle what may be a threat if and when the pastor is in, uh, the sheriff's office providing services, uh, as chaplain at the, either to each individual that's in a cell, let's say, or even, uh, they have a chapel, and so if there's a service being held. Now, obviously, that what somebody, what a preacher would be looking for in a, in a church that is not behind bars is different than what you'd be looking for when you know nobody should have a weapon, right? So, um, they may be different things, but there may be issues, emotional issues, psychological issues, or what have you, um, uh, that may have been educational or beneficial. Additionally, if the pastor is able to go out and provide that to the community, that insight and that wisdom and that information to the community, uh, and you all believe that that serves a public purpose, that the sheriff's office is now acting as, uh, an educator for the community, for churchgoers or pastors in the community, you certainly could say, "Hey, I think that this thing, uh, has value and served a public purpose." Uh, somewhat disappointed that we're dealing with a hundred and sixty-six dollars, and I'm tempted to write a check as long as, as long as the pastor promised me a write-off, maybe I'd be willing to...
I'm gonna have it.
Maybe I'd be willing to, but if I write to God, I don't think that's really a write-off for pastoral service. And I'm kidding God, I don't strike me while I'm saying it. Point being is, it's now squarely before you as to whether you wanna say, "I believe this served a public purpose and should have been approved as a county bill." Uh, I would suggest, if I were in your shoes, I'd wanna hear from the sheriff's office, and they're poised and ready to tell you about the benefits that they thought this would provide to the community. And again, if you think it provided a public purpose, I don't know that there're gonna be a lot of folks complaining, uh, about this expenditure if it in fact provided a public purpose, given that the county engages in this all the time. You spot issues that you think are of benefit, you know, and sometimes you have oversight and sometimes you don't. And many things, I'd encourage you to look through the budget, the things that we spend money on and give to, uh, other entities and say, "We believe this is a worthy cause such that taxpayers who have no choice in paying taxes are going to spend money on this particular thing." And I will tell you that, uh, the cases and the agi opinions say that it is acceptable as long as you maintain some control over those dollars. Uh, in other cases, to me, there are questionable, there are times where it is questionable what control we maintain over the dollars that we expend. Are we looking behind who's on the board for this? Are we maintaining awareness of what the dollars are going to? Sometimes, yes, sometimes not so much. Um, in this particular case, I think we know where the dollars went, and I think you, you had some control in that the sheriff oversaw the payment, and I suspect oversaw, though I don't know, to make sure that Pastor Vaughn went to the course. Um, I'll say one last thing, and then I'll shut up, uh, for now. I can't promise to shut up for good. Um, the, uh, the auditor sent out, I think, should disseminate Local Government Code one fifty-two point nine zero one. You may all, you may want to consider that as, as part of the basis for your decision today. You may, you may not want to, I don't know. It talks about a travel expense, I don't think this is a travel expense, this is a conference. And so, I don't think they're asking for gas reimbursement or a plane or a rental car, which to me would be a travel expense. So, maybe it applies, maybe it doesn't. I would tell you, many times there are provisions and statutes that say, "You can do this, you can do that, um, or you can't do this, you can't do that." Just because there is no statute that specifically addresses an issue doesn't mean that there's not case law or authority that permits a specific expenditure. If there's not, I mean, again, go back to the, how are we paying CASA? I mean, what, what's the basis for the given money? Maybe it's under three eighty-one, uh, maybe that's the basis, but it's not been the basis previously. Um, and there's other, you know, Sexual Assault Resource Center, there's other folks that have received dollars in the past that, uh, the county has decided this is something that we deem as appropriate, and we're going to try to maintain some oversight of. Um, it's not always easy, not always done. You do wanna analyze what is, what is it that your constituents are going to think about this particular circumstance? What is it that my constituents, uh, would want in this particular circumstance? And of course, we know you can't please all of your folks. Um, but I think, based upon my review of the law and the opinion that I issued, um, I think it is in the first instance for the court after this... it is in the first instance for the court, after this elected official has made his or her determination, it's up to you to decide whether you think it's an appropriate expenditure. Still remains a question for the auditor, and my hope would be that you and the auditor will be on the same page as far as how this is to be treated. And maybe you'll do that after you hear from the sheriff's office, maybe you won't. But I would hate to think that the gnashing of teeth would continue passed today over one hundred and sixty-six dollars. And let's hope Cory brought a checkbook. All right.
Commissioner Walker, we're talking about a two-day training class that was undertaken by our courthouse security deputy, David Cook, Jordan Cook. And there were two seats booked, and sheriff thought it was appropriate and right that Pastor Mac Vaughn be invited. For that second seat was done over a Friday and a Saturday in Congo at a Baptist church there. And it was aimed specifically at church security planning, true to awareness response. And arguably, the, the nature of that is somewhat applicable to our courthouse situation. I personally don't see a whole lot of difference between what could possibly happen in, in that sort of public environment, as with a church. And this came right on the back of the Southern Baptist Church tragedy in Texas. And the decision was made to send Pastor Mac Vaughn along with Deputy Cook to this training class. And it was specific, it couldn't be considered, I don't think, by anybody as gratuitous, which is one of the, one of the issues that sometimes comes about, I guess, whether you want to consider a non-county employee receiving something, was it gratuitous or was it not? I don't think, I personally don't think it was gratuitous. I think it was appropriate. And in light of the work that Pastor Mac does for the jail, for the jail inmates, and for the sheriff's office as a whole, and I'm sure if anybody within the community asks for his assistance, he willingly give it because he's that sort of person, twenty-four seven, it doesn't matter day or night. He'll make hospital visits, he'll make jail visits. He, he coordinates the volunteers that are coming into the jail to help with the spiritual needs of our inmate population. And of course, keeping them relatively happy, I guess is, I don't know if it's the right word, but if we take care of some of those needs, then we as a county, we as a sheriff's office actually benefit from that because our population is calm and warm.
Lieutenant, could I interrupt you?
Sure.
I know that Pastor Vaughn has been designated as the chaplain. He's not an official employee, but the sheriff has asked him to serve in that role, which is an honorary role. But how long has he served as that, if you know?
I'm not sure, to the best of my knowledge, I think it's at least three years.
Okay. And he's not been compensated for anything that he's done as a chaplain?
Not aware of anything. This is the only, this is the only expenditure. Of course, he, he has no budget. He's not a, he's not a member of any department as far as, you know, expecting to gain benefit from the county. It was just a decision that was made in this particular case. As I said, there's nothing, I see that gratuitous about what happened. We're talking about one hundred and sixty-six dollars for a two-day class, which, which was important enough for a gentleman called Mark Hell, who does criminal-related seminars throughout the country, and he's here right at this moment in Anderson doing a three-day class. He actually attended this class at this time during this, this particular period back in January. So the validity and the worth and the value of the class is kind of undisputed because you, we're talking relatively new ground as far as public awareness, because this is a relatively recent phenomenon that started up in security and places of worship and things like that. A lot of people just choose to ignore it and just hope nothing happens. But, you know, some, some awareness as you receive at one of these seminars arguably is very useful. I've talked about what was appropriate, you know, the, the jail setting, similar to a court setting and everything else. I think the training was valid and worthwhile, and probably tell you himself, he learned a lot from it. We use reserves, reserve deputies, they're not compensating, but there's never any quibble normally about how we train them, how we equip them. We do it because we believe in whatever we are doing for them, it is what they need. But to best of my knowledge, nobody's ever questioned any of the, any of the investment we make with our reserves, who are unpaid agents of the county. And we just, we just go about it in a responsible manner. I don't see this as any different. He's a reserve, he's an unpaid reserve, he's an unpaid agent of the county, I think, it's fair to say. He's the, he's the appointed person by the sheriff to head up, you know, the ministerial needs of, the spiritual needs of the sheriff's office and everything else. It's just a question of, to me, and obviously it's be, for you to decide, was it gratuitous payment, or could it have been conceived as gratuitous, or whether it was, it was appropriate, and whether the county was well-served by the investment.
And if I can make a comment now back to the court. Having heard that, with what I knew about it, if the question is whether it's legal or not, and obviously that's my job for you, I feel comfortable with you deciding either way. I don't think it's, I don't think it's prohibitive. I, I think it's a legal expense. Now, is there, are there political ramifications? That is for you to take, decide whether you're comfortable with it or not. But whether it's legal or not, I think you can go either way, and you'll be okay.
Thank, thank you, Lieutenant Cook.
Well, Lieutenant, you mentioned that our reserve officers, we, we do training, we spend money for training on them as well, but they're not paid employees, correct?
That's correct. They're not paid employees by the county. Zero. But, you know, obviously, we don't care, take care of everything that they need, but certainly we have, certainly training, and nobody's ever questioned the training class.
There are expenses regarding to that as well.
Whether it's a CPR class, or, you know, teaching somebody how to use an AED. Where, where our cell was in a sheriff's office, you know, testament to the fact, if you know, to use an AED can save somebody's life. I remember Jim Acquiesce. Whether that person was a, whether that person was a, an unpaid pastor in the jail setting, who knew how to use it and saved somebody's life, whether it was an inmate, a fellow officer. We, we don't quibble about value to the county, the county got the value in as much as a county employee was saved. And, you know, you have the ability to have people within the county who have that training, whether or not they're paid by the county specifically as an employee. But, you know, I used to be a paramedic, I argue the benefits of knowing how to do good CPR and how to use an AED.
Thank you, Lieutenant Cook.
We all collectively, if something happened here, it doesn't matter whether you're unpaid, paid or not, you know, people like me are gonna, are gonna move forward and do something.
I'd also like to add that I did speak with the sheriff, and he also wrote us a letter pertaining to his reasoning behind it. And he felt like that it was going to be a benefit to the county to have two officers as he classes. Pastor Vaughn, he did bring out that he has an ID card that he carries from the sheriff's office. He also has a badge, and he's been authorized for many years by the sheriff's department as an agent for his department. And he thought that in light of all of the things and the tragedies that have been happening with the mass shootings that we had, especially recently over in Wilson County, that he felt like this could, Pastor Vaughn could come back and assist in educating our deputies in, in how to deal with citizens and the questions they may have when, when these type of things arise in our community. Because we can't say it won't happen here, it's happening too many times, shootings at schools, you know. And our officers need to be educated in how to deal with these kind of occurrences. You asked the question, Mister Foltz, are you sending us information that, that if it accomplishes a public purpose, you know, to look at it from that perspective? Personally, I felt like it accomplished a purpose for the public to be able to have our officers trained by Pastor Vaughn how to deal with people when they come upon them. Many times we come upon tragedies, they don't have to be mass shootings, they could be a car accident. And not only them, but also for the citizens, but also for the officers who have to deal with them. Miss Mary, I did see your hand go up, and I also saw your information that you sent over. And I made this suggestion to, to the sheriff's department, in light of him thinking that Master, I mean, Mister Vaughn was his agent or his employee, not employee, but his appointee, that perhaps on a future agenda, according to this, where it talks about paying the travel expenses, and I, I think you probably mentioned it being a travel expense, because it comes out of a travel line when we pay for conferences, and it's travel and expense come out of that line item. But I suggested to him to maybe, so that we don't have this problem in the future, and I along with John C., will, if you're not in agreement with whatever the course decides, shit, we have to pay it, we'd be glad to pay it, because we feel like it does serve a pub, public purpose. But I ask that, if I could ask you on behalf of the sheriff, that in, on a future agenda that we appoint him as a county agent, which can, according to this that you sent, Miss Mary, Local Code one five two point nine zero zero one, that we can pay those type of expenses if he is an agent of the county who has been appointed by the commissioners' court. So I ask that, if you think that's appropriate, Mister John C., to put it on a future agenda to make sure that that covers the expenses of anything in the future. But as for today, I personally feel like this served a public purpose, to have the investment into Pastor Vaughn, into our sheriff's department, and I feel like Pastor, I mean, Sheriff, Sheriff Sal would not have done anything that he felt like was inappropriate, but this was brought to his attention by the county auditor, and he wants to, he also said, should there be an opinion of the county attorney's office that this expenditure is not proper or acceptable per the applicable law or policy, let me know so I can adjust my views on expenditure decisions such as this. So he's willing to do what's right. He felt like he did do what was right in getting the training in for his officers, so I'll leave it up to the other court members. We make a decision as a whole as to how we perceive this. Meanwhile, Miss Mary.
The only question I have is, did Pastor Vaughn go to this training so that he could come back and train the deputies?
According to?
Or so that he can also train local pastors? Because I don't want, I don't want other local pastors coming in saying, well, it would be a public service to our congregation if you sent us to that training.
Just say yes. That's all she wants is a yes. And we're done, and we're done.
Yes. Yes.
Purpose in audience, purpose in audience.
Yes, he has actually met with two of our pastors, just so you know, state law requires our facility, our detention facility to have religious practices for inmates. We have coordinated narcotics and alcoholics and animals, certain programs that we have to provide to them. And for several years, Mac Vaughn has done all the paperwork, did all the filings, did everything the state required for free. He screens all the pastors, confirms their legitimacy, we have people in the past who just went online, hey, I'm now, you know, a preacher, come in to see their kids. He confirms they're members of the church, how long with them at the church. He sits down with these people, explains their rules, what our procedures are in emergency, and actually does work with these new incoming pastors before they're allowed to hold church in our facility with our people, including staff and inmates. And he's been doing this for years, which also helps us meet some of the state requirements on the jail area. So it wasn't wasted training. He actually serves a purpose, and he does it for free, because if he didn't, we'd be paying somebody to do it and stay on that.
I thank you for that, because many times we look to you all to enlighten us as to what's really happening or what's occurring.
We've tried to give these services by law, and he's done it for years, coordinated. He developed an entire volunteer program and screening process that he oversees to make sure we have the right people coming in and they're legitimate before they're allowed into our facility to prevent problems we had in the past. We have to do this, he does it for free, so you know.
And I understand the position of chaplain in the jail setting, because as many of you know, my husband is a chaplain for TDCJ. But the main reason I questioned it was because, to my knowledge, he hadn't been appointed by the commissioners' court. And so that's why I brought it into question. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think everybody needs to have some kind of training in this active shooter training side. But my concern was with it, with the way the Local Government Code read, being appointed by the commissioners' court. That was my concern, and that's what, what drew it out to me. Because, you know, I have to look to see if all the laws are met, but it is up to y'all to determine whether it's, whether it's a legitimate charge.
And on that issue, Commissioner Walker, I will be happy to look into it. Keep in mind, this is how a lawyer's brain operates. Every time that you want to call someone an agent, you have the risk of liability. May create additional liability for the county. Let's say he's in a car, acting as the chaplain, headed somewhere and runs into somebody. Does the county get sued over that because it was one of our people? It's the same as if we were in a car, we got in an accident, the county would be sued, you could count on it. So let me look at that. I don't mind if you want to go ahead and put it on a future agenda. I just know that it has the potential, every employee that you bring on creates additional liability for the county, that that person could, you know, do something to injure somebody else or somebody else's property. Doesn't mean you don't hire any employees, right? I mean, you have to, and may very well be the case here, that it's a limited amount of exposure. But I'd like an opportunity to see what other counties may have done with regard to their chaplain, whether they've designated him as an agent to justify expenditure. And of course, as far as I know, you know, thirteen years, and maybe it's just because this one was, potentially was brought to this one, I'm not aware of any expenditure for a previous chaplain ever being made by the sheriff's office. So I don't think it's a regular occurrence. I don't think this is something you're going to see on a regular basis.
I'm reading some of the opinions, I'm sorry.
Did you give, did I send you my letter? Did y'all get my letter or not?
You did.
Can I make some comment?
Go ahead.
If you happen to start to fall asleep, we'll just keep going.
So I think the issue comes back to what is the value that was received from the training? And as the county attorney has pointed out regarding a county agent, in order for there to be, in my mind, public benefit for something, the individual doesn't necessarily have to be classified as a, as a county agent, so to speak. It was pointed out, we give money to other organizations that aren't designated as county agents. agents. So I appreciate the service that y'all provide, and I hope that Pastor Vaughn never has to implement anything that he learned at that training. Because if he does, it's a bad day in Grimes County. But that's where the public interest comes in, because if, God forbid, something happens, he's trained to at least deal in whatever capacity that would be with that situation. So in my mind, I think the expenditure was made and, or could be classified as being made in the best interest of the public. And I think Sheriff Sal probably made the right decision on allowing a member of his staff or members to get additional training in that area.
So is that a motion?
I would make a motion that...
I'm just saying, he might have some other questions. I beat it to death fucking.
I would make a motion that we reimburse Sheriff Don Sal a hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-one cents as payment for Chaplain Mac Vaughn's attendance at the church security planning and intruder awareness response training on January nineteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reimburse Sheriff Don Sal a hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-one cents as a payment for Chaplain Mac Vaughn's attendance at the church security planning and intruder awareness response training, January nineteenth and twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. All of those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move on now to considering take action regarding the burn ban. Chief Norwood, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
What is your opinion?
At this time, I say...
Take no action.
Take action. Now, I would remind y'all, our summer months are coming up, so please keep it on the agenda.
Okay. All right. All right, with that being said, we hear from our prior chief, we'll take no action at this time. We'll move on to item number sixteen to receive any updates on the strategic plan. Do we have any updates? Not at this particular time, okay. We'll move on to item number seventeen, considering take action to adopt an order before May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to authorize the sale of fireworks for the Memorial Day fireworks period of May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, through midnight on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and authorize the county judge's signature. See attachment number seventeen. All right, this is our sticks and fins.
This one is actually the one where you have to authorize it because otherwise it's not authorized. So you're authorizing the sale. Now, you could prohibit sticks and fins along with the authorization of sale, chose to do that. But having not instituted a burn ban, then maybe those that like sticks and fins don't want to prohibit sticks and fins.
And this is the Memorial Day fireworks period. And prior to Memorial Day, we'll have an update also on our ban. So I make the motion at this time that we adopt the order to authorize the sale of fireworks for the Memorial Day fireworks period of May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, through midnight on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and authorize the county judge's signature. All of those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have to item number eighteen, discuss and take action to reappoint Frank Perez Junior and Jared Patau to the local workforce development board and authorize the county judge's signature. I did not get a chance to speak to any of those gentlemen, but we do have, they've served us for several years on the workforce development board, and I have no reason why we should not reappoint them. So that's just my opinion. Is there any discussion?
I move to reappoint Frank Perez Junior and Jared Patau, is it Pato?
Pato.
To the local workforce development board, authorize the county judge's signature.
All right. We have a motion to accept a reappointment of Frank Perez Junior and Jared Pato to the local workforce development board. All of those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're up to item number nineteen, review and take action to approve the PC tech level-one position. And we've been given some information, thank you, Ms. Lucy, on the salary structure with changes therein. And it was asked by the judge that you receive a job, did you get a job description?
We did receive a job description. The judge had me form a job review committee, and we met Monday, and we went over the job description, and it met all the criterias for this PC tech position.
Which is a level eight, grade eight.
Yes, ma'am.
With the salary of eighteen to twenty-one dollars and sixty cents, and with tenure twenty-two eighty. It is the general administrative positions included, the administrative assistant for the county judge, chief budget officer, PC tech, and mission, PC tech will report to the IT director, that those are the changes that you've been implementing. Now, it's to approve where the level-one position, according to our grade, adding it to this.
Right, right. And I would, we've had this conversation before, you don't need me to say it. It's a big deal. When you add a position, you likely will never take it away. And so no matter what the revenue is of the county up and down, you're potentially cutting services to continue to have this employee. It sounds to me like we need this person, and it is on the agenda to take action to approve the position. And I asked that the job description be prepared and that there be a determination of the level and the pay. Sounded like all that was accomplished at the meeting. I would encourage you to make that part of your motion, if you make a motion to approve the position today.
That it was accomplished at the meeting?
Well, what level it is and what the pay range.
The level one.
Right, I would suggest, well, I thought you said level eight, but...
No, it's grade eight, but it says PC tech. I was about to ask that level one, you know, do it need to state on the grade that it's a PC tech level one?
Yes.
In the future, I guess, we could reevaluate grades for a second level or third level or at the level PC tech.
And one other thing I would note is, this will, I assume, be directly subordinate, this position will be directly subordinate to Mr. Cannon. So I assume, and maybe I assume too much, he's the one that you're authorizing to hire this person because he's subordinate to you. You could say, no, no, we're gonna do it, but it doesn't make much sense to me that you would do that. Any and all of those things that you want to point out in a minute so we can not have to reinvent the wheel when this comes up again, it would be appreciated.
Okay.
I move to approve the PC tech level-one position as grade level eight, as presented.
And you wanted to include that, did that have to be in the motion that the IT directed...
The director shall conduct the hiring, or shall, I assume he'll also have the power of fire, so call whoever you want.
Personnel, ma'am.
Yeah, the PT tech will report to the IT director.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, a motion by Commissioner Mallett and a second by Commissioner Cox. All of those in favor for identifying the grade level as a level eight, PC tech, level All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we have one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
All right, all of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.